Mayor, you're ready to go.
Okay, thank you Jill, we will commence. I'm going to call the City of Groton Public Hearing Order on Tuesday, February 16th, in response to State of Connecticut Executive Order Number 7B, Protection of Public Health and Safety During COVID-19 Pandemic in Response Further Suspension for Modification of Statutes dated 14 March 2020, Spinning in Person No Meeting Requirements, All Public Meetings Will Be Closed to the Public at This Time, Public Meetings Will Be Available on Zoom. And then, we're a roll call, I have Deputy Mayor Depot here, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Stanford, Councilor McCabe, I also have Groton Utility Commissioner Rob Zulliani present. And then, I will read. The City of Groton Notice of Public Hearing, the City of Groton Mayor and Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, 7:00 PM via Zoom for the electors of the City of Groton and other qualified to vote, to solicit input from them concerning the proposed municipal projects, Groton Utilities Projects, and Basra Light and Power Projects. Electors can join the meeting at, and we put the Zoom information there, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this second day of February 2021, and this was posted twice. So, the first thing we will do is we will talk about municipal project presentations. The first presentation is a Tyler House windows, and that will be presented by Parks and Rec Director Mary Hill. Mary, you have the floor. Mary, you appear to be muted.
I was for a minute, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it froze, okay, alright, so, good evening, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, Mary Hill, Director of Parks Recreation, coming to you tonight to present Phase Two of the window replacement.
It looks like.
I just lost my screen, so bear with me, I gotta turn it off.
Alright, there you go.
Okay. Alright. Sorry, so, I don't know, if anybody, back in 2018, we completed Phase One of work on the Tyler House at East Point Beach, the exterior wood decking and all finishings, hollow metal frames and hardware, we had 12 of the 17 windows on the first floor redone, majority of the windows on the second floor done, the existing wood lovers and some mistletoe and coppern tree work, that was our Phase One in 2018. Phase Two will cover the additional 34 new windows on the third, including on the third floor, the remaining windows on the first and second floors, all the windows will be the Anderson E-Series clad windows to match the original grills and the original color, as well as matching the existing replacement windows that we already have done. All the windows exteriors are painted, or come in a sky blue color, so there's no need for additional painting of those in the future, so maintenance will be limited once these windows complete. Phase Two will include the repair of the wooden dotted area, the southeast corner of the building, and also some of the gable trim that has pulled away, this would all painted to match the existing colors of the trim. The total for this project, as it is being presented than how it was presented last January, or last year, has increased to $114,800. One of the additional things I asked for the company to do, since we were going to be doing some painting, asked if they could also look at adding, painting all the soffits, the porch ceiling and columns, and any other window trim that may need it, that's an additional $18,700. If we were to complete this project in that building, in condition that it is currently, it would be, it would be at $133,000, $133,000, sorry, I apologize, $133,500 for that all to be done.
Okay, somebody needs to mute?
What's that?
Someone needs to mute, alright, Mary, do you have anything else on this project?
I just, this project, like I said, started in 2018, so it would be nice to see it completed, I did, we do have a letter of appropriateness from the Eastern Point Historic District that did expire in October 2020, but this is existing project from that permit, so I'm hoping that's just a matter of just going to the meeting and getting a continuation on this.
Good, yeah, we were gonna do a lot of these projects last year, and then COVID got in the way, okay, we'll go to the next one, municipal building, windows, doors, and landing?
Hi, this is Ron. So, I'm gonna kind of, this was one of Tim's projects that he had proposed, and what it was to do is to replace the windows in the municipal building, as well as the front doorway coming in, and the windows there. That was kind of the first part, and then what his vision for that front landing was, and hold off on doing those front doors until we did the front walkway, which would be installing, fixing all that concrete work, and then installing radiant heat underneath it, force for when it does snow and ice up.
Thank you for inviting me to be a part of that here tonight, and I hope this conversation will continue.
Alright, let's, thank you. Alright, Ron, please continue.
So, one of the reasons for changing that front walkway to a radiant style heat was to eliminate the use of salt up there, which has damaged those front door frames and doors themselves coming in, and there's some pictures that Tim had from the presentation, actually, that may be newer pictures, but he also had some from the presentation last year. And that, and again, the quotes that we did receive for this, again, were either 2018 or 2019, so as Mary referenced, the prices have gone up. With everything going on, so, or, at the time, I believe the price was around $350,000, so we'd need to build in a little bit of a contingency, and again, this would have to go out to bid based on the size of the project.
Okay. Alright, anything else, Ron?
No, I was doing my best to try to remember Tim's presentation.
Nope, that's good, and you can see from this picture here, we get a pooling, and so what's gonna happen is, we're gonna replace this, we're gonna put radiant heat, we're gonna have some drains, and so, we shouldn't have to use salt or a substitute product here, which eats away at the thresholds and also eats into the concrete, we're still gonna have to use sand or salt on the granite stairs, but that's okay, well, you know, this will be much better taken care of with this heating system that we're gonna have. And then, the windows are outdated, they are, they're single pane, they are, they leak, and sometimes they leak air, and sometimes they leak air and water, so, we're well overdue to replace these. So, that's that, alright, the next one is police dive locker asbestos abatement, chief?
Good evening, this project was originally presented by City Planner Carlton Smith. I was involved in the logistics and implementation of the concept plan of the abatement, as it would impact our facility operations by the asbestos abatement, as a result, I will present for the city on this issue. Our municipal building is addressed existing asbestos insulated spray in recent years. The abatement has been in phases, and this conceptual remediate room, we will seek to use more for IT upgrades as we move forward. This room was a dive locker room in previous years, and is now being earmarked for police communications equipment. The quote is from Michael Mater Company Incorporated of Waterford, Connecticut, to quote for approximately $64,000. With preliminary work, it's already been undertaken by the city previous to this project, it is likely to trend under budget or at budget and not over. It will be removal and disposal of asbestos containing spray on insulation above deep ceiling in the communications room below the police dispatch in the City of Groton Municipal Building. It would send asbestos, project would have to be notified to the State of Connecticut along with appropriate fee, 10 days prior to our start. We'd have to fabricate and install protection around equipment that is critical for operations and will remain in place during its abatement. Fabricate and install ventilation, remove hot air and provide cool air to heat sensitive equipment that will be existing in that facility. So, we'll be protecting assets that the city has acquired that need a cooler atmosphere and to work, and to work efficiently. They'll install critical barriers to protect equipment from water and dust, and it'll install scaffolding, install full containment with negative pressure, high efficiency particulate air under a HEPA format in filtration, remove dropped ceiling panels and grid, and remove sprayed on asbestos insulation that's been existing for decades in the ceiling. And we would have to pay to dispose of set asbestos waste in EPA approved landfill. It would also provide, we would have to remove some movable objects from the area, water and electricity, and we'll provide some training for our personnel, and it will be through the Contract Project Monitor, which would be Mystic Air Quality Consultants Incorporated. And they would provide background air quality sampling, visual inspections, and ensure our air clearance testing. Again, this would be for a amount of $64,000 on any proposal that had been submitted to the City of Groton from the Mater Company Incorporated of Waterford.
And this is a continuation of our asbestos abatement projects that we're doing, where, I'm not sure, we're close to 100%, we're not quite there, but if you go back to the 50s when this was built, it was common to spray, this is a fire retardant material, and we've been spending the last few years trying to finish up the asbestos removal, and that's why we need to do this now to continue on with that. Chief, anything else?
No, but I can't reiterate enough, we have just put in radio system equipment into the basement, and the environmentalists that this project will provide to protect that investment in city communications is significant.
Okay, thank you, okay, we're gonna move on to the Fire Department Company One repaving. That'll be Deputy Fire Chief Sergeant.
Good evenings, yeah, like the mayor said, my name is Ted Sargeant, Deputy Fire Chief here in Groton. So, our project involves repaving at Company One. About five years ago, Company One was renovated, originally, the paving was gonna be done as part of the building renovation, unfortunately, there were some cost overruns with the building, so the paving was never completed. So, we're looking to completely repave the parking lot, both, this is at Company One on Broad Street. We did receive some bids last year, obviously, we're gonna have to go out to bid again because they're over a year old. So, this involves repaving, removing the existing pavement, installing new paving, and then fixing the threshold in front of fire truck bays one and two, and also, we have a contingency fund of 10% of the cost. The paving, like I said, will be done for the entire parking lot, in the rear of the building, along the side of the building, and then the front. This picture here, the orientation you're looking at, this picture is taken from inside the firehouse, and we would redo the concrete apron in front of the two truck bays, one and two, that's where the heavy fire apparatus come in and out, we've tried to patch that area several times without success. So, the front parking lot, where the fire trucks come in and out, that will have a much thicker base of asphalt. And it's hard to tell, maybe in these pictures, the parking lot, we believe is original, it's over 30 years old, we know that, we believe the parking lot's original to the building. There's, we had, it's sealed several years ago, most of that ceiling is, seal coating is eaten away, so now we're looking to repave the entire lot, they said the rear parking lot, the side driveway, and the front parking lot. And we received two bids last year, we are gonna have to go to rebid. That's the view of the side, you can see all the cracks, obviously, that are in the existing parking lot today.
Okay, yeah, at this point, this is beyond repair, you can't just patch it, and also the thresholds where the trucks go over, and it takes a beating, so we're gonna replace that with thicker material and reinforced concrete, so that that can take better wear and tear. Okay, so now, we will move on to the Groton Utilities Project Presentations, the 2020-2021 Wastewater Bond Fund, I believe, Mark, you're gonna do this?
Yes, sir, this is Mark Byron, General Manager of Operations for Electric Water and Wastewater. So. I'm just waiting for Jill to put up the presentation.
My apologies, we skipped over police locker rooms, was that?
Oh, did we?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my apologies then, Chief, let's talk about police locker rooms, my apologies.
Yep. Mayor, I have to give great credit to Captain Eric Jenkins, worked through long hours in this project, and I'll comment at the end, but I'll allow him to give the presentation tonight, I think he did an excellent job on the project.
Okay, Captain Jenkins, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, just getting up the hour point for everyone to see.
It looks like you guys are muted.
Okay, now that we got that squared away, can everybody see the screen? Alright, like the chief said, I'm Captain Eric Jenkins of the Groton City Police Department, I've done this presentation last year concerning officer lockers in our locker rooms, we have three individual locker rooms within the police department, we have the patrol officer locker room downstairs for the males, they're presently 25 to years old at this point in time, there are presently 20 lockers located in this basement area. Dimensions are a little small, 18 wide by 24 deep, 72 high, of the 20 original lockers that were put in 25 plus years ago, only eight of them are in the original working condition. As you can see here, Locker One, starting from the left, you see the main latch is broken off, and we had to put a lap, a hasp and latch on there to get it working, or to secure it, Locker Two is still in its functioning capacity, Locker Three is missing the latch itself, there's just another locker in there, the conditions are deteriorating after 25 plus years, which also deteriorates some of the morale with the officers, when you bring down the new officers down in the locker room, you tell them to pet out a locker, and they're damaged, or they're broken and non-functional. Also, as you can see, the size of lockers will not allow the officers to put all their uniforms in there, being that they're only 1 inch wide.
And if we could mute?
So, this would be the plan for the new locker room downstairs, there are 22 lockers we would like to put in that are 24 inches wide and 24 inches deep, and they all have benches in front, so the officers can sit down and put their boots on, instead of cluttering the center console or center area up with tables and benches. If we move into the women's locker, which is the other side of the basement, what they have down there are 12 built-in wall lockers, which are 12 by 12, basically, they're school lockers or gymnasium lockers, they are non-functional to hang any type of uniform in there, you need 18 to 19 inches to hang up a uniform, and these lockers have no hanger rack or anything like that. So, what our female officers have done, as they are good, they have overcome and adapted, and they brought in three of their own, actually, four wider lockers that are removable and temporary, again, they're only 18 by 24, again, broken hasp and lasts in there because those are older lockers, so we're trying to upgrade them, these are the lockers that are built into the wall, here's a bench, there's not a whole lot of room in there, they have about 41 inches to move around down there, and then when they put the movable lockers in there, it's even less room, so the new plan would be to have the lockers upgraded to the same as the male officers, 24 by 24, and they have a nine inch bench out front, there would be six of them down there for them to utilize, which will have enough opportunity to hang all their uniforms, boots, and everything in the lockers. Last locker room we have is upstairs in the department area, which is the sergeant's locker room, this locker room is not in overly bad condition, although the lockers are just as old, their dimensions are 18 by 18 as well, fairly enough room, as you can tell up top, to put all their uniform stuff in. The new locker room, again, would be 24 inches wide, 24 inches deep, and 72 inches tall, which will hopefully give them enough room to put all of their uniforms in and keep it neat and tidy, and these, this is a depiction of the new lockers, and they will remain in this hopefully condition, there'll be restrictions on what is put on the outside of the lockers, as in nothing but your name, which we will provide them with magnetic name tags, and hopefully, this will keep everything neat, orderly, tidy, and build up the morale of the guys going in, especially the good for any new officers that are coming in. At the last presentation, my last quote for replacement of these lockers was from Interspace Systems, and a total of $57,265 for replacing all the lockers and get all the female lockers up to the standards that the male lockers are at right now, or will be in the future.
What I want to add is, there is a Title VII component to our actions here tonight, where a male officer and a female officer would have equal equipment, equal facilities within the City of Groton, that would bring us up to where we should be. Also, if you notice in one of the photos, equipment storage, we had dive suits, we got on a donation, these new lockers would allow us to house those appropriately, and as we modernize equipment and write the grants that we're writing and acquiring things for our officers, you know, there's an element of let's take care of the stuff that we get, and let's make them last as long as we possibly can, so that, you know, beyond aesthetics, this is also preserving things that we have contemporaneously.
Okay, anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, that should complete the municipal project presentation, we'll now move on to Groton Utilities Project Presentation, Mark, I'll turn it back over to you for the wastewater bond fund.
So, Jill, pull up the. Okay, so, this evening, I'm gonna talk to you about three different bond fund requests and what those projects entail, so Jill, next slide. So, the first project I want to talk to you about is the Electric Division's Transmission Project, this is a proposed project that encompasses upgrading the transmission lines that come into mainly Buddington Station to upgrade the voltage and improve transmission capability across our service territory, this is, it looks like a big dollar amount, $15.2 million, but this is a must-do, this is a requirement from ISO New England, so that being said, next slide, please. So, that being said, you can see, these are, these are some of the details, you can go to the picture, that's fine, it entails upgrading the transmission structures from many of them, which are old wooden poles to steel, but the beauty of this project is, and you can go to, you can go to the financial slide, is that we actually, Groton Utilities earns a rate of return on this project, so, as you can see at the bottom, and Ron, you have us, if you want to jump in and explain the chart, all the financials are there, but the bottom line is that we will earn 2.133 million dollars, an actual return of 8%, return on our investment, and will receive payments for all associated operations and maintenance expenses, so this is a, you know, fully covered, a project that we actually are gonna earn a significant amount of money by performing. You can go to the next slide. Alright, we just talked about that one, okay, so now, we're gonna move into the proposed projects for Basra Light and Power, the proposed capital spend is $4.25 million over the next five years, and this funding provides upgrades to the distribution system that includes and isn't limited to reconducting, which means putting new poles and wires up on, you know, certain circuits, replacement of transformers for South Road, Route 82, Camp Moeen, you can see, you can see the actual locations there, and other portions of the Basra and Lebanon service territories, and it includes all the facility upgrades, the engineering, all of the legal financing costs, so, all of these projects, which we'll show on this current slide here, involve one of three things, they either involve. System resiliency, which means when we have an outage, we can restore quicker, system hardening, which means when we have a storm, that we can weather the storm better, for example, we put up insulated and hardened tree wire that doesn't short out when a branch falls on it, or, in a general term, it improves our operations. So, just to explain a couple, if you look at the, at the top of the page, the three-phase 15 KV upgrade on South Road, that has to do with improving resiliency, because that's a heavily treat area over there, and we're putting up, you know, hardened tree wire, so, you know, it will be able to restore faster if it comes down, and it'll be less likely to come down because of the more tree wire is stronger insulated wire. If you look down at, for example, pole replacements, that goes to resiliency as well, and if you go, the neck, I think we have a slide in here, Joe, on poles. And if you go the neck, I think we have a slide in here, uh, Joe, on poles. I'll, I'll talk about that one before we get there. So this is, uh, the Yantick River Crossing, and we want to, uh, eliminate that river crossing, and that's an operational issue. If, if that, if that circuit went down, uh, because of a, uh, you know, a heavy ice storm or, uh, you know, high winds from a hurricane, that, that circuit would be a particularly difficult circuit to put back into operations and would affect the rest of the restoration in the Basra area. So, um, that, that was a good one. Let's see, the next picture. The next slide. So, uh, this is the, uh, 1X, the 34W 1X Transformer at Stockhouse Substation. And why that's important is because this transformer was put in in 1947. And so it limits our growth in Basra. It means we can't carry, uh, both air gas, which is our largest customer up there, and the city of Basra or town of Basra at the same time, uh, because it can't handle the load. So it severely limits how we operate in the Basra area. In addition to that, uh, we're seeing excessive arcing going on in the, this is, I, I don't want to get too technical, but in the tap, tap changer oil reservoir. So we know this thing is starting to fail. We've already had to change lightning arrestors and change the fans from single-phase to three-phase. That's the cooling, uh, that you saw on the side there. So that, that, that's a, that's a big deal. And, and that would certainly improve operations and resiliency, uh, in the Basra area. The picture that we're showing right now is the reconducting of South Road. Uh, there, there are rotten poles on that road. Those, those poles have been in there for, you know, probably greater than 50 years. And what you're seeing there is the actual, uh, new poles, uh, put in with the fiberglass crossarm sticking out. That's how we do the actual construction. But again, you can see the, the trees. It's heavily treed there. That road is very windy. And so this will not only harden that circuit for us, uh, but also make it easier to restore, if we, if we do have to do that. You go to the next slide, Joe. So this is an example of what I'm talking about with rotten poles. Uh, you can actually stick a screwdriver into the base of the pole. This pole has been there greater than 50 years. And, uh, you know, it, it, uh, it obviously jeopardizes, is the structural integrity of that pole. We have, in, in Groton alone, we have greater than 5,000 poles that are more than 50 years old. So it's something we absolutely have to focus on, both, uh, in Groton, that we're talking about Basra here in this instance, but it's an issue in both places. And, uh, hence, uh, the request to, uh, you know, put capital projects together to do pole replacements and replace, you know, 50-year-old, uh, you know, open copper wire or bare copper wire. Okay? We can move on to the water sewer. Next slide. There we go. So in the water division, uh, we propose $7.47 million over the next five years. And basically, there's three things that that affects. It's, uh, the water distribution system or water main improvements, meter replacements in the distribution system, and the Brandigie Stand pipe. So, um, you can move, you can move to the next slide, Joe. Okay, we just talked about, go to the, go to the following one. The picture of Brandigie Tank. So, uh, Brandigie Tank, uh, or Brandigie Stand pipe is the major capital bond fund project for fiscal years 22 through 24 for the water division. And that tank is 75 years old. It's, uh, you know, it's really showing its age. It's rotting out. That's, it's a water storage tank in the city of Groton off Brandigie Avenue. And it receives flow directly from, uh, the water treatment plant and ensures water service and fire protection in the residential community and industry along the Thames River. The elevated water in the distribution system is the cornerstone of a resilient water program. This, this project alone is about $3.8 million over the construction time. Next slide, please. Okay, next one. Thank you. So on the sewer side, we're proposing $4.995 million over the next five years. And, uh, this project provides upgrades to the wastewater collection system to include but not limited to sewer pipe replacement or lining for various portions of the service territory, pump station rehabilitation, upgrades to the sodium hypochlorite system, various upgrades at the pollution abatement facility or wastewater treatment facility as we've re-termed it. And, uh, as part of the pollution abatement facility plan. So, go to the next slide, please. So here's some, some of the specifics, right? Upgrading the existing, whoop, we already did, that slide changed slightly. So, um, the sodium hypochlorite system, for example, is an operational enhancement that, uh, helps us with odor control. The wastewater treatment facility plan, uh, is going to address our resiliency, hardening, and better operations issues. That's a study that we're doing, a comprehensive study of the entire wastewater treatment, uh, system. And out of that, we're gonna get other recommendations, uh, to enhance operations down there or possibly even, uh, do away with the wastewater treatment facility. That's also one of the issues discussed in this plan. So the next slide is just the, uh, the footprint of the wastewater treatment facility. And we could go to the next slide, please. So the major capital bond fund project, uh, that we're talking about in the wastewater division is, uh, the proposed upgrades at the wastewater treatment facility, or pollution abatement facility off Thames Street, as it has been called previously. The project, projects, scope timelines and costs are developed in the current facility plan being developed by Wright Pierce, and an estimate of $5 million has been established for this period. The integrity of the treatment plant is vital to the city of Groton and important for the health of Long Island Sound. Going forward, two vital projects for the wastewater division have been selected. Updating the 35-mile collection system, uh, piping and updating the aged infrastructure of eight sewer pump stations. These projects have been estimated $5.6 million and $4.8 million respectively. With failures in these two interconnected parts of the sewer system, funds allocated towards, uh, plant improvements may be reallocated for collection and pumping, piping, uh, which is why, uh, these needs have been identified. So, um, what you may not know is, the collection system is 80 to 90 years old, fully depreciated, and actually is, uh, old, uh, clay and concrete, asbestos-infused, uh, piping, and, uh, desperately, uh, need of work. So that, that concludes, uh, my presentation on those projects for those three areas. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. Mr. Mayor? You're muted?
So, thank you, Mark. So this concludes the wastewater bond fund, water bond fund, electric bond fund for Groton Utilities, and electric bond fund for Basra Light and Power. We'll then proceed to the public hearing to solicit public comment from the electors of the city of Groton and all others qualified to vote concerning the proposed municipal projects. So when you are addressed, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes to, uh, ask your question or, or, uh, make your statement, and then we'll go from there. So do we have, Jill, do you have a, a way to identify hands?
If somebody raises their hand, I can tell you who's got their hand raised.
Okay. We will now open the floor to questions and comments. Raise your hand. Are there any questions or comments? Jill, do you, okay, Commissioner Zilliani?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've reviewed all the information. This is a five-year bond program, correct? We're not gonna go beyond five years with these, uh, with these figures, correct?
That's, that is the current plan. That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor McCabe, you had a hand up.
Yes, um, this was more of a, a statement than a question. I just wanted to, um, say that I, I thank Chief Bellman for bringing the locker project to us. Um, I, I like the awareness of trying to create, uh, an equality between the women's lockers and the men's lockers. And I think this, especially those pictures, were very telling in, in how much this project is needed, uh, and I appreciate you bringing them forward.
Yeah, I, I agree with you 100%. And like I said, we were gonna do this last year, and then the COVID hit, and so they weren't doing any bonding. And so now we are, that's why we wrapped all these together to get everything done. These are all required projects that we need to move forward. So, thank you. So anybody else, any other comments from anyone else in the audience?
Mayor, this is Ron.
Ron, go ahead. Ron, you have the floor. Ron Yuhas?
I just want to reiterate one thing, and, um, I'm not sure that we made it clear. The first one is to repurpose bonds that we already have the money, um, from the Colonel Leonard School project. So that is not new debt being issued. That is just repurposing those funds for these new projects, whereas the other, um, ones will be new bonding. So I just wanted to clarify that, that the municipal projects are just repurposing of bonds with money that we already have.
That's correct. And Ron, since you're, since you have the floor, explain why we have to have the public hearing for that, and we have to take it back to the Freeman.
That is to, to get the authorization to do these projects and repurpose that money, because that money was, um, originally authorized for the Colonel Leonard School project.
Correct. Okay? And that's a good point, that it is not new money. This is repurposed money, uh, and we already have the, the bonding authorized. And just to let you know, we will be having a Freeman's meeting on 1 March, and we're working through it now, but it looks like it's gonna be a hybrid meeting of, um, let me check my notes here. So the plan for the Freeman meeting is Zoom and in council chambers and in the auditorium if needed. And we'll need to verify the people or residents, both in person and online. So if you're online, you'll need to show your driver's license or something to show that, that, uh, either you're a resident or a property owner, uh, so for when we vote. I realize this is different, uh, but we are not, this, we've, we checked with Bond Council and, uh, uh, checked with Hartford, and we are gonna have to, we do have to have the Freeman's meeting, so that's how we're gonna do the, hold the Freeman's meeting at this point. Uh, Commissioner Zilliani, you have the floor.
Time of that meeting? On March 1st?
It should be 7 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I don't see any. Uh, let's see. Jill, do you have any, any hands?
I don't.
Okay. And, in that case, uh, I am going to adjourn the meeting at 7:50. So we are adjourned, and thank you for coming out to the public hearing. Seth, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.